It is Tuesday. It is Tuesday, July... Is the microphone on? Can you hear me okay? Hello? Testing, testing. Hello? Oh, now we got something. Okay, thank you. Good morning. It is the ten o'clock hour. It is Tuesday, July twelfth, two thousand and sixteen. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing district for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. We are going to take a moment of reflection with all the turmoil that's happened. Hope to keep those in your thoughts for a few moments. Thank you. And please now if you will stand, I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is signed by the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introduction of new employees. Do we have any? No new employees. Actions from closed session, county council.
There was an action taken to defend the lawsuit Floyd Squires versus Jerry Hemmingson, Chairman Del Norte County. Motion by Supervisor Finnegan, seconded by Supervisor Howard, and approved by all to defend that lawsuit.
Thank you. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, which we can't do because there's only three of us, but the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any corrections or deletions? Okay, moving on. We'll go to brief reports and announcements by supervisors. We'll start with Supervisor Howard.
Brief reports.
Brief, please.
Shoot, there's only five of us today. Busy couple weeks since our last board meeting. Attended the tri-agency meeting with Supervisor Finnegan and had some great discussion around working with John Orin and bringing him back to the community to work on telecommunication issues and potentially looking at call centers, which has been something Supervisor Finnegan has been advocating for for quite some time. In addition, we're preparing to look for some funding specific to revisiting a transient occupancy tax study where there was investment in tourism funding through the transient occupancy tax through the Visitors Bureau represented by the Del Norte County Chamber Commerce and revisiting the study that they did in two thousand and seven through tri-agency. Also, attended a few meetings with Huauiu residents specific to homeless issue off of Shady Lane and responding to their needs where they're seeing an increase in burglaries and also trespass and working with Dave Mason and the sheriff to hopefully address some of those issues that we're seeing up there. Also visited with Craig Bradford with Huauiu Community Service District on some concerns with the water tank issue that will be hopefully installed soon to replace the one that's need a significant repair and replacement and review their final environmental impact statement. Also met with the city on the city-county two-by-two to address some issues locally and in addition, talk about potentially some combined services in the future. Attended solid waste meeting and in addition, upcoming Smith River Neighborhood Watch meeting this coming Wednesday where we'll address some, hopefully some action plan that the Neighborhood Watch could bring back to the board for consideration. Also want to congratulate my parents on their forty-ninth wedding anniversary. Good job, Mom and Dad. And also congratulations to the Wakefields for the opening of the brewery on Front Street. It's a great project and to all their partners that supported them.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Finnegan.
I will be brief too. First meeting was a meeting at the Childcare Council regarding the indoor play space with some of the partners, and I know that they made a presentation of future facilities, so that'll be something developing in the future. Tri-agency meeting as Supervisor Howard mentioned, talking about broadband, talking about the Council of Economic Advisers and getting them to make a report to us at the next meeting, really tapping into the knowledge and expertise that that group has. And then also talked about maybe future expansion, that group, the strength that the tri-agency really has. Participated in some of the Fourth of July festivities like just about everybody else did within the state of California, and it seemed like half of them were here. Great turnout, great weather. Had a meeting at the airport, JPA, and, you know, I've never been around, maybe it's this election season or something, I've never been around so many haters on social media and so many misrepresentations in the newspaper regarding some of the good work that's been done and by whom in this community. The airport is excellent. We did break ground on the first phase of the terminal project. Expect that the second phase will probably be funded somewhere September-ish for the actual construction to begin next of the building in spring, but you're looking at a nineteen million dollar investment approximately by the federal government on that phase alone, the terminal construction project, and it is not grounded, it is not dead, it is not terminal, it is alive and well and growing and I think one of the anchors of the has199.com, so stay tuned and be encouraged. Then went to the Family Resource Center grand opening, and yes, the Family Resource Center's been there for a while, but we had a change of management, so to speak. There is now a Family Resource Center Board that is for a private nonprofit and lots of good things there, where I guess the real change is being a 501(c)(3), you can actually grow some of the programs outside of zero to five, and the programs for zero to five and most of the programs now with the Family Resource Center are being run by the Family Resource Center, the executive director there, Mira Long, and that board and not first five. So, great partnership, a lot of good things to look forward to, please visit it, and that's about it.
Oh, that is brief. Unusual for this particular group, especially these two particular supervisors.
Maybe we should look into what Curry County's got going with just three, you know?
Okay, I had a few meetings, a few activities. We had a future facilities meeting where we were discussing the, expanding the use of the rec center gym for more activities for the youth, which I think will be a great partnership, it's pretty preliminary discussions, but hopefully that moves forward, looking forward to that. And speaking of anniversaries, my wife and I celebrated our forty-third wedding anniversary just recently, so that's all good. Thank you. Half of that applause goes to my wife, I'm sure, probably three quarters, something like that. I did, had agenda review, as David spoke about, we did have a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting, things are moving along very well, and we're looking forward to things to come, so soon that will be a great focal point of the county, so that's looking forward to that. I attended the sixty-seventh annual Farm Bureau meeting yesterday, a lot of discussions on water issues and things, Supervisor Howard was also there, a lot of discussion on legislation that's come down and impacted the farming communities, so standby, we're working on that. Enjoyed the Fourth of July festivities, the parade, the beachfront activities, and as Supervisor Howard said, the opening of the Seaquake Brewery, which was very well-attended. It was hard to get in, matter of fact, I think they were holding people out because of being fire-safe or whatever, but anyway, a lot of activities going on, it was all good, it was a great weekend, the weather cooperated, so it was a great, great time. And now we are going to have a report from our CAO. Brief.
Should I be long-winded since you guys are brief?
Certainly have an opportunity.
I'll be brief. I attended some of the Fourth of July festivities, I couldn't get that one out, primarily the parade because my daughter was in the parade, so, and I also did go down to the brewery for the opening, and there were so many people, I was only there for about twenty minutes because it was packed. Attended the tri-agency meeting, have been involved in some negotiating meetings with the SEIU ten-twenty-one, attended the city-county two-by-two, been dealing with some evaluations on the HR level, had meetings with the department heads and staff, attended the future facilities meeting with the indoor recreation space discussion, and in general have been working on reviewing some different parts of the budget and legislation that's coming forward that is still out there at the state level.
Okay, that was brief, but we are briefly moving right along. Okay, so at this point, we'll take up the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on consent agenda items only? Okay?
I mean, it's approved, authorized on number three. The Assistant Director of Health and Human Services to sign agreement and any other required documents related to the contract, the state of California requiring county to continue to adhere to community mental health program requirements as requested by Assistant Director of Health and Human Services.
Okay, could you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry?
That's okay.
My name is Wilma Wright and I'm a mental health client.
Okay, Wilma, thank you, thanks for coming.
I'm the first full-service partner of Del Norte County, and I find that there's grave lacking in, there's a lot of problems, problems with what's being paid for, such as there's a huge amount of money being given to the staff for items like computers and higher education and things like that, and I have to pay twenty-five cents per page for any medical records to get any of my medical records. I think that's a little unfair. I think that the standard between what is seen for, what they feel is a good job for their staff to be doing and a good job for a person like me to be doing. At one point, I, y'all might remember, I couldn't even talk, I stuttered so badly, and now I can. I've been punished, my punishment is that they take me out of the service center, they don't let me go to the service center when I make a complaint, so if I file a complaint, then I'm taken out of the service center. And this last time that I took it out of the service center, I had no idea why it I was enjoying a afternoon group with my peers, it was art group, and LeAnn Cox had, you know, we were just all, you know, I was knitting, another person was coloring, and you know, another person was just, you know, we were talking about how long the internet says that, you know, we could go a distance from traveling from here to there, you know, it only takes forty-eight hours to travel across country, yeah, but that's without going pee, you know, and without even letting your car go pee. But LeAnn Cox stopped and looked at me and said, "Why are you still here?" And she followed that up with saying, "Your mother doesn't even love you." And I had been working on emotional regulation, so I kept my rage in check and my tears in check and just sat there and listened, and she went on talking about how when she moved up here, she moved up here and her family all followed her and, you know, they all loved her, and I had just recently found out that I had moved here from, excuse me, I had moved here from New York for my father because he was dying, and my mother was begging me to move here, and my father had passed away and my mother had distanced, and instead of getting the support that I needed from the center, this is what I got, and I had just weeks before that found out that my mother had sold the house and moved without telling me, so it was a pretty sore subject, but LeAnn made sure I knew that her family supported her and there was another client that had already, you know, sold out everything and had moved away and, you know, so...
Wilma, if I could just interrupt you, I think you probably want to speak on number nineteen, which is the Mental Health Services Act.
Oh, sorry.
Which is fine, we can take these comments.
I wasn't sure whether...
We can take these comments and address that, but I think you need to find out who the supervisor was of this person that...
She was not working, she was on vacation and Jack was...
Yeah, and so once you get a chance, I think you need to tell your story to them.
I did.
Okay.
I did, and I was told that I couldn't go back to the service center.
Oh, that's unfortunate, and I would like to applaud you on your speaking, you're doing a wonderful job.
I'm sorry, I took more than three minutes.
Okay.
I wasn't sure, but I...
That's okay, we'll just take those comments.
I got the twenty-five cents and the use of the money for the tuition instead of giving it to, you know, computers for the, the, the center for the mentally ill would be a better place for, you know, instead of staff.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment on the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing no more public comment on consent agenda items, we'll bring it back to the board. Any further discussions, comments? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. And within that consent agenda, we are pleased to recognize the accomplishments of David We had a resolution in there, this is a resolution of the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors, David Mason retiring Code Enforcement Officer III of Del Norte County Community Development Department Code Enforcement Division. Whereas David Mason will retire from county service on July fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, after serving the County of Del Norte for eleven-plus years as Code Enforcement Officer II and later Code Enforcement Officer III. And whereas David began his public service in nineteen ninety-one with the city of Santa Ana before taking the Code Enforcement Officer position with Del Norte County in January two thousand and five. Combined, he has provided twenty-five years of public service to improve living standards in California's communities. Whereas David has received many accolades over the years, including special recognition received during his tenure with Del Norte County, such as California Code Enforcement Officer of the Year for two thousand and fourteen, from the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers, Outstanding Community Service Lead-in Award from the Del Norte County District Attorney in two thousand and twelve, Special Combination Lead-in Award from the Del Norte County Sheriff for eliminating drug houses in two thousand and ten, Letter of Commendation from the California Highway Patrol in two thousand and eight for locating stolen vehicles, assisting with investigations and incidents resulting in the prosecution of suspects, and a special recognition for exemplary performance from the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers in two thousand and seven. Additionally, he was recognized as the most enthusiastic employee by the County Board of Supervisors in two thousand and six. And whereas David has raised the bar for code enforcement in the County of Del Norte and the state of California by consistently maintaining a caseload and compliance rate far above the statewide average for code enforcement officers while coordinating enforcement efforts of federal, state, and local agencies to eliminate blight and public nuisances in Del Norte County resulting in reduction in criminal activity while supplementing the county's limited budget by obtaining grant funds from the state of California, then recovering more than two hundred thousand dollars using abatement liens. And whereas David's efforts have had a profound and positive effect upon the aesthetics, aesthetic appearance of the community and quality of life in the County of Del Norte, and whereas in David's spare time, he earned an AA degree from the University of Phoenix in Criminal Justice Administration, served as a foster parent, served as a volunteer on the Del Norte County Sheriff's Dive Team, and received local and national recognition for his service to Boy Scouts of America, of which he is a tremendous advocate and mentor for local youth. And whereas David will soon be found spending time traveling in his RV with his wife Deanna, getting to wear civvies and keeping his property unblighted. Now therefore be it resolved that the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors hereby acknowledges the diligence and dedication of David Mason exhibited during his years of service to the county, and be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisor expresses appreciation and best wishes to David and his family and good luck in his personal endeavors. Passed and adopted by the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors this twelfth day of July two thousand and sixteen.
No speech? Come on.
I almost made it out without making a speech, so I just want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the community of Del Norte and that I have endeavored to do my best with every project that I was set to and took on. Want to assure the community that I've been busy training my replacement and that he is picking it up quick, fast, and in a hurry, and he'll take over and do a wonderful job, I'm sure, and I have every confidence in his ability to continue serving the community in eliminating blight and improving the overall quality of life for the community of Del Norte.
Thank you.
If I might, Dave, I'd want to give you a sincere...
Thought we were done, sir.
Thanks for your work, you know, this, the policies were set in motion in the late nineteen nineties, and then, of course, we followed them up with regulate, the policies and regulations and timelines, hired you, you know, early on, I guess, two thousand and four, two thousand and five, and you sort of, you know, in government, when people need something done, it's never done fast enough, and you had the unenviable task of explaining to people timelines in the process, you've done a commendable job. I think we rewarded you once for enthusiasm, that you really took the initiative in this job. job, that you brought hundreds of thousands of dollars into this community, that this board has spent even more than hundreds of thousands of dollars towards this blight issue. And while I commend the citizens of this community for taking the initiative to help pick up garbage outside of the county purview, it is you and the county that took the lead, that the Board of Supervisors set the policies that you administered and carried out. And that's flown under the radar, you know. All the other issues seem to get all the press when you just kept your nose to the grindstone and made it happen. For that, I thank you very, very much. You made it a better community for all of us.
Thank you.
Supervisor Howard, do you have anything?
Can't pass up that opportunity. You've done incredible work as this community. I've watched you with the local Boy Scout program. Your extracurricular activities have reflected extremely well on this community and the county and the whole. Your response time to issues, whether it's in Gaski, whether it's Hayuchi, whether it's Smith River, my district, has done a great service to our area. And I wish you well on your travels. And I know Dominique has some big shoes to fill, but he's already got a good start, it looks like, with that shaved head going. That's the right start.
He has the right haircut. Thank you. I just, in parting, I just want to say that my philosophy towards this has always been, if you're not part of the solution, you are a part of the problem. And just sitting around and watching other people work, that is the major part of the problem. And so, I applaud and commend anybody that wants to get up and help.
And I just want to echo everything that's said and especially what's in the resolution. All your accomplishments and accolades that you've received in the past are well warranted and we appreciate everything you've done. And I apologize, Supervisor Gitlin asked me to read a little something that was pretty short, but commending you also. I had it printed out and somehow didn't make my folder, so I can't read it. I apologize for that and he'll probably have the opportunity at the next meeting to do that. That's my fault. I missed that. So again, thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Okay, we're done now. Okay. We are going to go to public comment, I think, if I can find my... Yeah, we're gonna, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any public comment?
My name is June Sadler and I'm new to Crescent City.
Welcome.
Thank you. I love Crescent City already. I have a real concern. I dislocated my shoulder on May 17. An ambulance was called, a Delmarque ambulance, and they were very good to me. I arrived at Sutter Coast Hospital in the emergency room in much pain. The doctor wasn't even told for four hours that I was in the emergency room. There was just one doctor at that hospital. That's not appropriate. Sutter Coast was asked to be part of the consortium which consists of 40 hospitals in Sacramento and other areas. I'm wondering why Sutter Coast gets tax exemptions when they don't serve the local people. Many doctors could practice there, but many have been run out of the county because of the actions of the board of Sutter Coast Hospital. They perform their duties in secret. Why? They're a community-based hospital. I don't understand how a community-based hospital can have such secrecy. Their CEO makes $840,000 a year. That's unspeakable. I understand you wrote a letter to, I can't remember her first name, Kamala Harris? I think it's Harris, Attorney General of the State of California. And then I also understand you did not receive a reply from her, not a telephone call, not a letter, nor anything. I really would hope that you would write another letter and place another phone call because I think it's appropriate to do so. We're paying, I'm paying, Medicare is paying, my supplemental insurance is paying for costs that are about 60% above the market value. I don't appreciate that. Because everyone is paying for the care they receive at Sutter Coast Hospital. I guess this is all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Williams and I'm Vice President of the Local Union. And as you know, we're in the process of beginning our wonderful bargaining sessions. And I just thought I would bring to your attention some issues that we have discovered with some of your employees. Actually had one of them here that was going to speak this morning. Unfortunately, she fell ill. So I'm going to try and read her story. And they printed it in really small print, so give me a break while I try to read it. It says, "My lane is Melissa K. Strom and I am an integrated caseworker for Delmarque County Department of Health and Human Services in Crescent City, California. I am married with two boys, living at home. My family and I qualify and depend on CalFresh benefits and Medi-Cal coverage in order to make ends meet. Thank you, Melissa K. Strom." This is just one of many of our employees that not only are on our payroll, but are also qualified and receiving the benefits that we provide for the public. And we have flyers to hand out to you with two other stories on it. And we just wanted to make you aware that this was going on, just in case. I know you guys are really busy, so you don't always get to hear the little day-to-day details of things, but we did want to make sure that you were informed of this and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi. I'm Lisa Howard. Good morning. I'm a teacher at the high school. I'm a concerned parent. I am definitely a concerned community member here for Delmarque County Literacy. I attended the literacy symposium in June and I know many of you also did. It's great to see that the county is engaging in the literacy movement here, the initiative that is taking place in our community because having children read at any age is super important to the success of our community. It's now July and the real work has to begin. And so, I was receiving a letter in the mail, and I bet you got the flyer as well, that reminded us to attend board meetings and get to action and join the cause. And I know at the county level, that means it's very multifaceted, trying to engage all your agencies to also take a piece of this literacy project. So in that effort, I would implore you to please make literacy a standing agenda item so that we don't forget the cause that we are working towards as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
In fact, I know we're not supposed to respond, but Lisa, if I could, First Five and the Family Resource Center both have board meetings today, starting at 3:00. And that needs to be at the top of our list as well, and is, so maybe weigh in.
Hi, I'm Victoria Dickie, 11 Day Finnegan's district. I came in because I wanted to see Dave Mason get his little thing. And I appreciate that you recognized it. While I was here, went into the bathroom, I mean, you know, sorry. I always hear that politics is going to the toilet. If you're gonna go to the toilet, go to that one. I have never been in such a clean room. I don't know who your janitor is, but I think sometimes, you know, we need to say some of these good things that the hard-working people do. I could have eaten off the floor. That place sparkles. I don't know who's doing it, but whoever it is, you should be going, hey, come clean my house, clean this room. It's beautiful. Sorry, just had to say it.
Thank you. Way to go, Kelly?
Yeah, Kelly is our janitor for this building and he does a great job.
Yes, he does.
I'm Sharon McKinney. I live in the district. While we're saying nice things, I want to tell you that last meeting, I mentioned a hole at Mackinac J. 2:00 that afternoon, it was repaired. It's very nice to see cars making a nice tight corner when they're going to the ballgame or the meetings at the Episcopal Church. Thank you. And by the way, two cars stopped for me at that intersection.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here on behalf of our children in Delmarque County. We have some wonderful playgrounds and we have a wonderful community. My concern here is the tar chips that are in the ballfields playground, there's two and there's one at the Wellness Center. Last year, this really came strongly to my attention because I have grandchildren that play there and play ball, I have many other children. And when they leave the ball, these playgrounds, their hands look like this and their shoes look like that. I am a former aircraft mechanic for the Navy and so I'm really familiar with dirty petrol products, what they do to our health. And I've asked the rec department about this and the wellness clinic, excuse me, and I have not gotten any favorable response. I've looked up online, it is not really safe for them, the carcinogenic. And I brought samples for the board to take and look at. I would like to get a county mandate to look into this further and possibly replace this. And I know it's a safety for falls in playgrounds, but children can fall on their wrists and break them anyways. And I know the splinters were a problem, but all our other playgrounds have wood chips. And in the future, we can always redesign our playgrounds too so that they're not dangerous. We don't need these kinds of turf products. Do you have any questions?
It's your comment period.
Okay. So that would be mine, would you like to take samples so you can review them? There is a countrywide effort right now to get all these replaced, including the athletic fields, because the stuff does cause neurotoxic genetic problems. And the children at these playgrounds have their hands stained black. They go to the concessions, they buy candy hot dogs and, you know, eat those with this on their hands and rub their eyes. So I'm really concerned about, you know, this in our community.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would you like to take samples to look at? Okay, thank you. Thank you for taking my comment.
No problem.
One last on this, I know that it would take a process to remove this and I know we have a wonderful community that would step up to the plate to help us do that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, then I'm gonna close the public comment period. You'll still get a chance to comment on items that we have on the agenda. And we do run it a little bit behind. We do have a 10:30 timed item. The Delmarque County Fair Junior Livestock Auction Committee is gonna do a presentation. Come on. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Taylor Jones and I am currently serving as the 2016-2017 Delmarque FFA Vice President, as well as a Delmarque County 4-H All-Star and a youth representative on the Delmarque County Junior Livestock Auction Committee.
I'm Walter Phillips. I am serving as the 2016-2017 FFA historian, as well as in Grange and a youth member of the Delmarque County Junior Livestock Auction Committee.
We have had many amazing opportunities through these organizations, including for me, developing my passion for public speaking, which is what has me standing here before you today.
But also an opportunity to learn and grow due to animal projects.
We believe in the statement, "With great power comes great responsibility." And as leaders in these youth organizations, it is our responsibility to advocate for our fellow members.
Many of our fellow members and I are raising animals which will be auctioned this August at the Delmarque County Fair.
Members work hard throughout the year to ensure that come auction day, the buyers receive the highest quality meat possible. On behalf of 4-H, FFA, and Grange members in our community and the Delmarque County Junior Livestock Auction Committee, I would like to invite you to the 2016 Delmarque County Junior Livestock Auction held on Sunday, August 7.
There will be a buyer's luncheon at 11:30 a.m. in the Arts and Crafts Building, following by the auction at 1:00 p.m. in the Ace Building.
I will provide each of you with an invitation that will get admission for two to the Delmarque County Fair, as well as to the buyer's luncheon. Thank you for your continued support of the youth in Delmarque County and I hope to see you all there.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Supervisors, any comments, questions?
No, great job. Keep it up. We'll be involved. Great to see you involved.
Looking forward to being there.
Thank you.
Good job.
We forgot, "Good morning."
Okay, thank you. Great job. Okay, we're gonna move on to general government items. Item number 14, we're gonna waive full reading and adopt the ordinance creating Title 19 Fire Safe Regulations and deleting Chapter 14.16 and amending section of Titles 12 and 14 as requested by Heidi.
Good morning. This is a follow-up from our last meeting where we introduced the ordinance amendments. At this meeting, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members' questions? Any public comment?
Paul Simone, I'm the local battalion chief for CalFire. We appreciate your action on this item. It will keep the community safe regarding anything wildland fire-related, as well as streamline the process. So I thank you for your action.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment?
With that, I would move to waive the full reading, adopt ordinance creating Title 19 Fire Safe Regulations and deleting Chapter 14.6 and amending section of Titles 12 and 14 as requested by Community Development and CalFire.
Second that motion.
Have a motion on the second. Kylie, will you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item number 15, we're gonna continue the public hearing, waive full reading and adopt an ordinance amending Title 21 of the Delmarque County Code Coastal Zoning Ordinance and adopt a resolution authorizing transmittal of the ordinance to the California Coastal Commission for Certification. Randy, anything to add?
I don't think so. Similar to the previous presentation, you did hear this presentation at the last meeting, we didn't receive any public input or comments since that meeting. So if there's no questions from the board, certainly available for any questions if there are, though.
Great. Any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, then I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Thank you. Randy, thank you for the Community Development Department's diligence in seeing this matter through. With that, I'd make that motion to move to adopt ordinance amending Title 21 of the county code and adopt the resolution authorizing transmittal of the ordinance to the California Coastal Commission for Certification as requested.
And I would second that with waiving the full reading.
Okay. Okay, have a motion in a second. Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item number 16, we're gonna allow the, or action to allow the temporary closure of Klamath Boulevard in Klamath.
And with, oh.
Rosanna?
That you were halfway there.
This is the annual request that we received from the York Tribe for the Salmon Festival. I think it's the next 54th year and it's a good community event.
Thanks.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion on the second. Public comment? Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board. Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item number 17 is discuss and give direction to the county administrative officer to draft a response to the 2015-16 grand jury report.
This is the annual step for the board to take direction and ask me to provide a draft for the board responding to the findings and recommendations. In particular, the Board of Supervisors' responsibility deals with the financial side. There is also responsibility of each of the departments to respond to the report for their department. They, as the appointing authority, they oversee that and on the day-to-day operations. So I'm asking that you give me that a, a direction and then I will provide a draft that can be reviewed and discussed at a future meeting.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, then bring it back to the board. Any questions or additions or specific directions to Jay?
Go follow the process and bring us back a draft so we can have a healthy discussion.
Jay? So there you have the direction, respond to the grand jury report. Okay, item number 18, consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Delmar. Jay, do we have anything?
Uh, nothing in particular today for letters. What we continue to do is reach out to our legislators through our advocates or directly in regards to any of those trailer bills or gut and amends. In terms of the gut and amends, typically the legislative process, the ledge platform that the board will also consider again here in about two months, covers what the board's policies are or direct action that's already been taken by the board. So what we're attempting to do is respond whenever there's some impact that may affect the county or counties. And generally, we're working with our advocates as well as RCRC and CSAC and even in some cases, the League of Cities. So we continue to do that and we will until they're done changing things.
Yeah, good luck with that. Any supervisors have any specific legislative or budget questions or comments?
No, I'd, I'd just like this to pay attention. I know we heard at the annual Farm Bureau meeting yesterday, the ag overtime exemption and the gut and amend that occurred with Assemblyman Gonzalez. I think we probably should pay particular attention to that with the Farm Bureau's help, as I know it will have a great impact on our agricultural community.
Yeah, it's changing. I think long about August, we'll have a better handle on some of the state stuff. The National Association of Counties Annual Meeting is gonna be prior to our, I think it's the 2022nd, prior to our next meeting here. So we'll probably have some federal updates. Don't expect a lot of movement on anything from the feds until they figure out who's gonna be in the White House, but we'll see. So I'll report back on that.
Okay, item number 19, approve and adopt the Mental Health Services Act three-year program and expenditure plan, annual update fiscal year 2016-17. Heather, anything? Same old thing? Okay. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then we'll bring it back to the board. Motion?
I'd make that motion, approve the Mental Health Services Act three-year program and expenditure plan for fiscal year 2016 and 17.
Go ahead and second that. Under discussion, I want to highlight a letter that was received as part of the public comment period from Angela Glor, First Five. And Heather, you know, before you were here, we've been obviously doing this year after year and there's always been a, a promise to be more inclusive of going way upstream and addressing mental health issues of children and their families, zero to five. It's nice to see that it is inclusive of some of the programs on this one, but I would encourage us to continue to do that, to look at prevention rather than spending the kajillions of dollars on intervention and starting at the earliest end. And it seems like, I know Supervisor Howard used to talk about everybody moving in the same direction as we all did as community members, but when there's such an outreach and a focus on literacy so early, so should it be for mental health and focusing on the entire family, so.
I'd, I'd like to agree with Supervisor Finnegan and, and I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but at the same time, I, I do want to encourage and reflect back on that upstream movement. It, it really takes a large crew of folks who really understand the intricacies of the Mental Health Act and more importantly, how those services are operated within our community. And I do know there are some gray areas in there where we could work with some of that funding that is specifically dedicated to, to more of that intervention, but as the board has encouraged, mental health staff is to really look outside the box for those other opportunities to move upstream. And I, I do want us to continue to reflect back on that as much as we can with that Children's Bill of Rights.
Well, I really already closed the public comment period, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and give you a few, few seconds if you want to say something quickly.
I just want one quick second. What was said to be at that group could have been my life that day. I could have, when, when Leon Cox asked me why I was still there, seeking treatment and that my mother didn't love me, I could have very well went home, asked myself indeed why was I still there and taken my life.
Well, we're certainly glad you didn't. Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it.
Well, I believe that that should be taken into consideration and, and have a more welcoming service center.
So I would invite you to introduce yourself to the director, Heather, after the meeting and make sure that you're getting to the right place.
Okay, so with that, Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. And that concludes the meeting. We are adjourned.